Welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming or viewing. My name is Steve Delaney. I'm the acting town manager. This is an evening that's called the Town Manager's Fall Town Meeting warrant articles hearing. I can promise you an exciting and informative hearing. How about if we settle for informative? This is an opportunity, it's really an attempt, another attempt, as it's required by the charter, but it's an opportunity to really do one more run through and help you understand what's on the warrant, which is the agenda for Monday night's town meeting. This is an opportunity for us to go through it if there are any questions, which are great. This is not a town meeting format where there is discussion back and forth and debates. That's for Monday and beyond. But this is an opportunity just to make sure that everybody's well informed. So we'll just basically walk through the various articles of the town meeting warrant. And there are some representatives here who can speak to various articles that may come up, that are on the warrant. So why don't we just begin? The date today is August, October 29, 2025. The first article is a pretty standard article that talks about hearing the reports of town offices, boards, and committees. Pretty routine, and it's an opportunity to come up. If there are various reports, they'll be heard at this point in the meeting. Any questions on that one? Article two relates to hearing an act on the report of the planning board and place the report on file, take any other action related there, too. There are other articles related to the planning board, but that's, this is really to hear their previous report. Article three is listed as a consent agenda, and it relates to the vacant seats of certain town meeting members, and that is expected to be indefinitely postponed, but it appears on the warrant as one of the items. Article four relates to the planning board articles. They held a hearing, their own hearing, on October 28th, so we don't need to kind of go through the planning board articles at this point. They've already held their required hearing, which is, was held yesterday. Article five relates to adding the property located at 2A Rangelay, Rangelay Ridge to the Rangelay Park Heritage District. And I believe we have a representative here who can just give us an overview on this article.
Hi, I'm Jill Kiara. I'm a resident of Rangelay Association and the chair of the Rangelay Park Heritage Association Commission. We are a group that was formed in 2015 primarily to preserve and protect the Rangelay district, features of the homes in our area, their cultural significance, their architecture. It's an opt-in commission, and we have 19 out of 56 households who are in the commission, in the district, I should say. And 2A Rangelay Ridge is opting in to become a part of the historical district. So it's nice for the town to preserve this area. It's a park-like atmosphere, and when houses do so, we support them in the process of getting into the district.
Terrific. Thank you for having us on there.
Sure.
Any questions? Sit for anybody on that one? Thank you. Articles six through 10 relate to the Capitol Planning Committee, and we have a representative from Rogers here from the Capitol Planning. Article six is to hear their report, and then their, Article seven relates to the consent agenda. And if you'd like to just do a quick overview of what's coming up, if you'd like, or?
Consent agenda. Article seven is just going to be closeouts from prior projects, so that's pretty straightforward. It's our sort of standard housekeeping article. Article eight is the bulk of the Capitol agenda for this time around. There are going to be 19 motions in that. We're going to set a world speed record, trying to keep it under the 10 minutes that the moderator has given us.
Not gonna happen.
Not gonna happen, but we're gonna work very hard at that. If you, would you like me to just read through the, what the?
If you'd like to.
The various items are. The first, which is the largest item that we have, is the Lincoln Chiller, and that's a $2.2 million motion to replace two components of the air conditioning in Lincoln. The next is removal of underground fuel tanks at the library and at the public safety building, which we're mandated to do by code. Pretty straightforward. Next is repair to deteriorating stones, walkway stones, paving stones in front of Ambrose School. Replace that with concrete pad. The next is a little bit different, Sims Corner traffic improvements and design. We have applied to and been informed by the state that if we do the design and the permitting work on reconfiguring Sims Corner, then they will support the construction costs of that. So we're asking for $300,000 this time around to get to 25% design, and it'll be another $300,000 further down to get us to 100% design, but then the state will pick up the construction costs, which are probably in the $5 to $7 million range. The next is Kenwin Road traffic calming. Some of this initial engineering work has been done on this, and this is going to put in chicanes on Kenwin Road, Kenwin Road, yes, in an effort to slow down traffic as it speeds down the hill they're heading.
I actually had to look that word up. I hadn't, I hadn't heard that in so many years.
Chicanes?
Chicanes. I said, boy, that's a, I had to look it up. So it's, it was wonderful to figure out what it was.
The, the next is for an aerial lift vehicle for the electrician. At DPW, the vehicle that we have has sort of gone beyond its useful life and is no longer safe and operating. It's got a bucket lift associated with it. After that, we have funding coming from two sources for a highway and cemetery split backhoe. It's a specialized backhoe that fits inside the spacing in graves, and it's also utilized by the highway department. Then we have the very descriptive implementation of risk assessment plan. What this is really is an ongoing multi-year project where we are, take a look at specific municipal and school buildings and go in. In this case, we're going into the Mystic Building and installing cameras and key card systems and things like that to control access and to give the police department a view of the building from the patrol vehicles. Next is a straightforward DPW replacement of a vehicle for $100,000, a dump truck. The next is Mystic School Playground upgrades. We'll be installing a couple of shade shelters and water bottle filling facility. Straightforward. The next is, and I know she's behind me, replacement of voting machine, replacement of voting machines. We've had some older ones. They've started to fail. We get them back online, but it's not one of these things that, that you want to find yourself caught at election day and not having them all working properly. We're also getting a, an incentive from the state to do this, so it'll reduce the cost for that. The next is bathroom door replacement at Gin and McDonald Fields. We're going to go from the key system that we have to a remote controlled system and a time system so that they can just be open and closed on a schedule. They're also in bad shape. We had a child trapped in one of them for about 20 minutes so we could get DPW there to extricate them. The next is replacement of police department tasers, and they're about 10 years old, and even though they may not get pulled and used in the line of duty often, we still train with them, and they're just aged. There's newer technologies that make them more effective. So this is a small amount of money to replace those units. Next is a health department vehicle that, that has basically failed. We don't have any real mileage left on it in terms of the battery life. We've been told by the dealers that you don't want to put the money into this vehicle, that it would require to bring it back up to spec. It's better all around just to get a new vehicle. So the, after that is a department for the recreation department. That funding will be coming out of the rec. They're using an old cruiser, and we'd really like to get rid of that because we get about six miles to the gallon or something like that, and we'll get a, we'll get a hybrid vehicle that will work for them. Number 16 is computer, it says computer programming at the water treatment plant. This is a repeat article. We got to the end of last fiscal year. This was approved last year. We got to the end of last fiscal year, and we ran out of retained earnings. We were unable to do that. So we're being asked to revote this into the new fiscal year. Same exact project, upgrading of the computer systems for the water treatment plant. The next is a, also a jointly sponsored CPA, WCCP and CPC project of backstops and fencing throughout the town. It's about, it's $111,000. We're contributing $61,000, and the WCCP is putting in $50,000 all around. And finally, in a little bit unusual, we're pulling roads and sidewalks forward into this year, and I'm not sure why we haven't done it in the past. That will get us a couple of extra months of road repair time in the summer. Instead of having to normally wait until July to start this whole process, we'll be able to begin in, in May. So it's just sort of pulling it forward and giving them some extra time. And it's also, there's also a free cash request in that of $300,000 to up the amount because of having utilized some of chapter 90, chapter 90 money for the bridge repair on Shore Road. So that's, if you think we're gonna get through that in 10 minutes, I, I, I'd be very surprised.
I like the optimism.
Yeah. We're gonna try. We're gonna try.
Article nine is also yours.
Yep. Article nine is a little bit of a different story and a good news story as well. We're do, we're requesting $1.237 million for our INI project with the inflow and infiltrations into the sewer systems up on the east side. We normally do engineering and construction, but we're gonna go for engineering and construction, pull it all together forward. The good news about this is, this is a 75% grant from the MWRA, and the remainder of it, 25%, is a zero interest 10-year loan. So.
Article 10 is also yours.
And article 10 is replacement of a 62-year-old pressure-reducing valve that lives in a vault, and it's had a long and hard life living under the ground. So we're pulling in a whole, if you can see, we're pulling in a whole lot of extra money from closed-out projects. What we are ultimately requesting is additional authorization to borrow $167,527.07. So that will be the, that's the actual incremental increase of, of what we're asking town meeting to do, to, to approve. The rest of it is all from account closeouts.
Terrific.
And that's it.
Thank you very much. Article 11 is considered noted as part of the consent agenda relative to Finance Committee articles on transferring free cash. That will come up. Transferring $50,000 from free cash to FY26 general insurance budget, and transferring $7,500 from the assessors department expense budget to the personal services, so it's an internal move within the existing budget. Article 12 is also listed as a potential consent agenda relative to water and sewer retained earnings. Again, a fairly routine type of adjustment and move within the budgetary process. Article 13 is also an adjustment on recreation retained earnings, also considered to be part of the consent agenda. This is an adjustment of revenue estimates within the rec department. The revenue estimate was a little high, so this is an adjustment to revenue down a little bit to make it consistent so it stays clear on our books. Article 14 is also considered part of the consent agenda. It relates to other post-employment benefits, also called OPEB. To reduce the unfunded liability, this is an effort to put $350,000 in free cash to the OPEB account as part of moving forward to, to fund our unfunded liability for post-employment retirement benefits. Article 15 relates to the discussion of Roberts Rules of Order and town meeting time topics. Is this, Mary Ellen, did you want to speak to this at all, or how this is gonna, how this is gonna work? Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I am your town clerk, but I additionally was seated on the study committee for the Roberts Rules versus Town Meeting Time. We met five times over the course of the summer to investigate the differences between the two procedures, parliamentary procedures, and the committee came up with a report, which has actually been posted up on the town's town meeting page. And Peter Haley, the chair of the committee, will be presenting this report under Article One for the town offices. And the committee has voted favorable action and unanimous to move to town meeting time. So in addition to that Article One supporting the request to go from Roberts Rules to Town Meeting Time, the town moderator and myself came to the select board to just add this possibility of Article 15, to put it on the warrant so that the town meeting body could debate the issue. So Article 15 is to move in second to change the parliamentary rules. And Michelle, do you have anything to add? Or it is a majority vote. The moderator will announce it, place it on the floor. By the time it gets to the town meeting, the report will be heard from Peter Haley. So there'll be ample time for discussion. In addition, we also have Committee on Government Regs, which supported this with a unanimous vote, and we also have the Rules Committee, Committee on Rules, also voted last week to support this change.
Super.
And wouldn't it be effective, Mary Ellen, as well?
Oh, right. True, sorry. Yes, I'm thinking about all those things. Okay, so by bringing it to the fall town meeting, the attorney general I will submit it to for approval, and we would have approval should it pass the town meeting by the beginning to the mid part of February, so that the new rule, should it pass, would be effective after the spring election in time for the spring town meeting, so that new members don't have to do two different types of parliamentary law.
Terrific.
I would just make one clarification. I'm not sure GovReg's vote was unanimous last week, but it was certainly still endorsed by GovReg's. I just don't recall.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Because I wasn't there.
I, you may be correct on that, so it was a majority.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Articles 16, 17, and 18 relate to the Committee on Government Regulations. Is Megan here?
No, I can speak to that. So if anyone in the room would like copies of 16, 17, and 18, they're printed off at the table for anyone watching. There was an info session sponsored by the TMMA on Monday, October 20th, where this was covered. There's a recording that certainly I think town meeting members could access. Government Regulations also had a public meeting on October 23rd, and I'll do quick highlights of the Article 16 changes Chapter One. I should say, select board endorsed all of these changes at our meeting on Monday night. Chapter One, Article 16, updates some definitions, updates the town website from the town bulletin, makes singular numbers and gender, gender-neutral representation in pronouns. Our member, Bill McGonigal, worked with Government Regulations on these definitions. That's Article 16. Article 17 relates to town meetings and notice and when details on motions are due to meeting members 10 days instead of 13 days. Impacts of warrant articles on appropriations to be shared with the Finance Committee. And also deletes some standing committees that are no longer, that have been dormant for, I want to say about 20 years? The town clerk gave that information. And then Article 18 is the anti-litter chapter has been updated with additional definitions, and select board voted on that. So if anyone wants to watch the info session, that is, that was recorded. There's questions, I'm sorry, there's hard copies here, and I will take questions to GovReg's chair if there are any tonight.
Thank you.
Sure.
Article 19 relates to the Conservation Commission, and I believe that Tracy can give us a snapshot of what this is all about. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. So the, there are three categories of changes that are proposed to the bylaw. The first category are changes that were previously recommended at spring town meeting by the Committee on Government Regulations, but were not considered for lack of time. These include correcting typos and approving electronic communication in the commission's processes. Second category is removal of the fee table from the bylaw and designating it as a regulation. By state law, permit fees collected under the Winchester Wetlands bylaw must be deposited into the town's general fund and are not designated for any conservation-related activity. Removing these fees from the bylaw and handling them as a regulation to the bylaw will give the town more flexibility to adjust the fees as circumstances and economics dictate. The third category is the addition of climate resilience as a wetland value. Wetlands and their adjoining areas play a critical role in protecting Winchester from extremes of weather. Activities proposed in areas that under the, that are under the jurisdiction of the commission. With Winchester's history of flooding as an example, predicted to be exacerbated by climate change, the Conservation Commission proposes to introduce language to the bylaw that will allow the review of projects for their impacts on the ability of wetlands to mitigate or provide resilience to the impacts of climate change. The Conservation Commission can then consider the potential for such impact as it reviews a permit application and works with applicants to preserve this critical wetland benefit. The language that we have chosen in G comes from climate smart recommendations made by the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions to add protections from the impacts of climate change to wetlands bylaws. An example that they cite is from Newburyport. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council also recommends incorporating climate resilience into wetlands regulations and cites Arlington, Boston, and Rentham as examples. Impacts in, in addition, protection from the impacts of climate change are consistent with new regulations being developed by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. This bylaw change will allow the Conservation Commission to consider the potential for climate change impacts as it reviews permit applications and works with applicants to preserve this critical wetland benefit. Existing interests of the bylaw already protect some climate adaptation and resilience benefits to humans and nature, such as for flooding. However, there are specific wetlands values important to the mitigation of impacts from or adaptation to climate change that are not explicitly covered, including providing carbon sequestration, localized cooling, and the protection of biodiversity. Adding these considerations to CONCOM review of applications will help Winchester preserve our wetlands and their benefits for residents in the face of climate change. If the climate change impacts will, are adopted, they will be one of 11 criteria reviewed under the wetlands bylaw. We do not anticipate complying with this additional criterion will contribute significantly to project costs, but can produce significant benefits for residents and the environment. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tracy.
Article 20 relates to the transfer from free cash or other available funds, money to supplement the DPW personal services and expense budget, and includes an amount from free cash, $51,000 to supplement fiscal '26 DPW budget. $34,000 is for personal services, and 17 is for expenses. Article 21 relates to a project related to solar studies. And Michelle, did you want to comment on that?
I can try.
Okay.
So this solar energy, select board was behind very much in the fall a few years ago on the new Lynch School as part of the state of town, state of the town and some ongoing work with our sustainability director. They identified some sites for potential roof-mounted arrays or ground-mounted arrays, and there was some rush to try to potentially get those installed and purchased before federal incentives expire at the end of the calendar year. But at one point, the group decided to pivot to just actually understand the feasibility of can the high school roof support solar? What would the engineering look like to put a ground-mounted array near the VO or the middle school parking lot adjacent to the Unitarian Church? So this is to look at the, sort of, to have an engineering study come up with actual design documents that could be put out to bid for solar arrays in one or more of these sites, depending on what the engineering yields.
Thank you. Any questions?
I hope that was right.
Sounded like it was. Article 22 relates to transfer of some of money from the Parking Meter Fund to the Wedgmead Parking Account. In the Town Center Parking Account, it's listed under a consent agenda. There were two motions on this for each of those locations, so that's on there as a, as a potential consent agenda. Article 23 is also listed as a potential consent agenda item to transfer from free cash or other available funds to the Employee Healthcare and Health Insurance Stabilization Fund established at the spring 2022 town meeting to turn back funds from fiscal '25 that would be going into this account, which is a plus. Article 24 relates to, also potentially on the consent agenda, this relates to the cable access funds, and it stipulates a town of appropriation from the, from the funds, cable funds, to the PEG account, so that's what that relates to. 25 is also listed on a potential consent agenda. It includes the payment of any bills from prior fiscal years that may be on the agenda. We're not aware of any at this point, so my hunch is that this will be postponed. Article 26 is a article from the Winchester Contributory Retirement Board, relates to potential increase in the cost of living adjustment base from the $14,000 to $16,000, or take any other action related there, too. Stacy, would you like to comment on this one?
Yes, good evening. I am the ex officio member of the Winchester Contributory Retirement Board, and I'm here to represent the board tonight to explain what this article is all about. The board can select what COLA base to use, but it has legislative action that's required to approve it. Currently, how it works, the retirement board approves a 3% or up to a 3% COLA increase, a cost of living adjustment every year for the retirees. History shows that we've always done the max of 3%, but I don't know if everyone is aware that what you apply that 3% to is called the COLA base, and the minimum is $12,000. We increased the COLA base back in 2019 to $14,000, and now we want to take it up to $16,000. It's an additional $60 annually, well, for this year. It gets added to their base, but this is something for the retirees. The cost of living adjustments are not really keeping up with inflation when you look at their pensions, and it's only on $14,000 of their total pension. We have about 50 or so retirees that have a pension of less than $16,000, and we have about, oh, I forget the number. There's maybe 25 that are over $75,000. So it's not a big ask for the individual retirees, but it does impact our unfunded liability by about almost $2 million. So it's just one of those things that we're, it's supporting our retirees, give them enough money to pay for the additional health insurance costs that come our way every single year. But I'm here to answer any questions. Do you have them?
Sure.
So the, the cost of the, the cost of this is $2 million?
Yeah, over the life of the retirees, so it's just factored in to pay for our retirees that are retired now. It's part of the, it's part of the unfunded liability. So you look at each, each individual retiree only gets from this right here a $60 increment, but you add that to their current base, and then you figure out how much that would cost over the life of these retirees. It's part of the actuarial liability.
What's the annual cost?
We have about 300 retirees times $60, whatever that is. $18,000, is that what it is?
Is that?
Is that? I don't, I can't do the math.
I, I'm just saying, these, you know, they, these should be expressed in, in the annual budget impact, whether they're small or big. But so we're looking at a standard that, so.
Yeah, the pension fund itself, the retirement system, their normal cost, the cost that it will, the annual cost that will hit the retirement system's budget is that $60 per retiree, and we pay for the retire, the retirement system's budget.
retiree, and we pay for the retirement system's budget through the appropriations. So, these costs get added to the actuarial costs of the system over the life of, right now, the actuarial tables say that we're going to pay off our pension liability in 2027. What this will do is push it out to 2028. We'll pay a little bit more in 2028 than we had anticipated.
But you could also estimate the annual or determine the annual cost impact is what I think I heard you ask.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
We could probably have that available for town meeting.
Yeah, there's going to be a memo that is going to be on the town meeting table that goes to town meeting members, and it'll be on the website that app. That just provides some facts and some numbers.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
For now.
Okay.
I'm confused.
Okay. But that detailed information will be available at the town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I know it sounds like it's going to cost a lot more when you think about the $1.9 million or the $2 million when it's really only $60 per retiree, but you have to, that gets compounded and added to the life of the remaining retirees. So, that's part of the actuarial.
I mean, I'm not interested in the cost per person. I'm interested in the cost of town annually.
Absolutely. And we have that for you.
Yep.
Also?
Thank you very much. Article 27 is a report from the Personnel Board on their actions. I actually have, they've had their information presented. There will be eight motions considered under the action of the Personnel Board Report. I can highlight what those topics will cover. There are several union contracts that will be requested for funding under this. The DPW contract had been settled, so there are two motions related to that for the collective bargaining agreement for the Winchester DPW Workers Union. There's also a custodial union contract that's been settled, and this is requesting the funding for that contract to be approved. There's also a third contract that's been settled that's clerical support staff that's in various locations to the town departments, and that's included in this and will be one of the motions that's included in the motion packet for the town meeting. There is also a request, those are the funding pieces that relate to the union contracts. There's also an item in there, a position creation under what's called PT 13 Community Preservation Act for an administrator as part of that community preservation package. So, that would be considered as part of that, and that'd be part of the discussion. There is also a position creation under a management title of Deputy Town Manager. I don't believe there was any money attached to that, but it was establishment of the position title itself. Michelle can address that if you'd like, but there is no money attached to that. I think the thinking was if in some future point, the board decided to go in that direction, at least the title would be there. Is that...
Yep, that's right. Just adding that to kind of at the same director level as police chief so that there is a position on the compensation table, but we don't have a deputy town manager candidate nor do we have any salary we're trying to meet, just having the flexibility to create the position. And in talking with Personnel Board, it sounds like it's something we often do with our rec enterprise. We anticipate that we might need the role, and we put it on the comp schedule, and it might take a couple of years to fill, but that was the idea.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Are there going to be costs for each of these?
Each motion, absolutely. Each motion, and as Michelle just said, on the last motion regarding title, there is no cost. But on the other motion, particularly the union contracts and the position that relates to the community preservation, there is a detail with that as part of the motions.
Is it in the current?
It's a separate handout, Roger. If you don't have it, I'll get one for you.
I have one here. It was in your packet.
Okay.
Okay.
And that includes the, that includes the, the cost of the, in the past, sometimes we've done it very irregularly, so sometimes we're just looking at the incremental cost because some of the costs of contract is already assumed and, you know, steps and so forth. So, what I am looking for is the, is the cost of the contract in its entirety, in other words, compared to the previous year, the previous contract.
I'm not sure that that will show. I think you will see the cost of the contract itself, what the settlement cost is, as part of that settlement, as part of the cost on the budget. The budgets themselves are available as you go through each department, but the article and the motions relate to the added cost related to those contracts that get applied to the various budgets, and it's detailed within the thing. The total impact on the total contract is not part of that motion.
Roger, I think he will have the information in his presentation possibly, usually.
Also, two is that in comparison to years past, the contracts for all of the unions from the last cycle is on the Human Resources' website.
Are you...
The last cycle's contracts for the unions are on the Human Resources webpage on our website.
So, we can do like a before and after?
Yeah.
Okay. Article 28 relates to the Community Preservation Fund, and...
Hey, Julie. Julie Broderick.
Julie's here, thank you. Well, just like magic, appeared at the table, thank you. If you'd like to just do a summary of the projects, that would be wonderful, a snapshot would be great.
Yep, thank you. I'm Julie Broderick. I'm on the Winchester Committee for Community Preservation, and I'm the Historical Commission representative on WCCP. So, the WCCP has offered Article 28. We have a number of projects that went through our pilot review process this summer, and they're summarized here. So, there's $59,000 for a submerged aeration system in which pond from the Conservation Commission. This is intended to improve the water quality, reduce algal blooms, and make the pond more healthier and, you know, better suited for recreation. The WCCP is chipping in $50,000, proposing to chip in $50,000 for the Lincoln Elementary School HVAC chiller. We are recommending $50,000 towards the design and engineering work for pickleball courts at Ginfield. There's $112,000 recommended for repair of the columns at the Sanborn House, and this is funding that would be matched by the Massachusetts Preservation Group that offers matching grants for this type of work. There's another $50,000 for park and playground fencing and backstop repair that I think Roger mentioned. This is a combined project with the Capitol Committee. $90,000 to rehabilitate the Leonard Basketball Court. $350,000 towards the renovation of 160 Forest Street, which is an affordable housing project. The remaining $250,000 will come from the Affordable Housing Trust. There's $50,000 for a Beauregard Park restoration, so this involves replacing decrepit fencing, cleaning up the area, improvements to the bathhouse, new playground, generally making the space more, well, accessible and appropriate for families of Winchester to enjoy. And then finally, there's $225,000 for restoring Ginfield. This is installation of an irrigation system and replacement of all the sod across the field. Any questions?
Terrific.
I have some of the motions, too.
Oh, okay, yes. And I was just going to mention that the Select Board reviewed the list of projects the other night and gave its support, as did the Historical Commission, and I believe the Capitol Committee has supported a couple of the motions, two and five, that are Capitol-related.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Catch up here. Article 29, deceive the town will authorize the Select Board to convey the care, custody, control, and ownership of a certain property at 160 Forest Street to the Winchester Affordable Housing Trust. Anybody want to comment on that one?
Sure. The town inherited this property a few years ago, and at Fall Town Meeting 2024, Town Meeting authorized Select Board to accept title of that property. And we worked with the Affordable Housing Trust at the Select Board's direction to come up with a plan for rehabilitating that property. So, what they would do in terms of renovate or add to it, this, so you just heard from the WCCP, there's money coming out of the CPA to support that renovation. This would transfer the care, custody, and control to the Affordable Housing Trust, which manages other properties in town. And Select Board, when we were given the ownership at the Fall of 2024, really didn't want the ownership. We wanted to give it to the trust, so this hopefully does that. They are best suited to rehabilitate and manage and market this particular property.
Sure.
Is the appreciation of the property, I mean, is this a sort of technical deed restricted?
Yes, it will be deed restricted, so the sale price will be limited based on income rules.
And when they sell, what happens?
There's only a modest amount of appreciation the owners could realize. It's still restricted, sort of in perpetuity. And Mike, if you have any more to add? I could be making things up here, but I hope I'm not.
Yeah, that sounds good.
A little bit.
No, 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 everything you said was accurate, and I think the trust is the right place for this, so they can put out RFQ and RFP and get some interest, and there are architects, lawyers, housing experts on the trust, and so that's the goal here. The Select Board doesn't have that expertise and doesn't have that bandwidth, so that's the motivation here. But we did take the property from the previous owner with the deed restriction, and that was conditioned by the state. So, we, it has to be affordable housing in perpetuity and can be changed.
Correct.
Thank you. Article 30, would transfer the care and custody of the Mystic School from the School Committee to the Select Board for general municipal purposes. That is Article 30.
I expect the School Committee, sorry, I expect the School Committee to cover that in their hearing tomorrow night, and Select Board has signed, we co-sponsored this with School Committee, and we will accept the lease for, there is a tenant at the Mystic School, so the Select Board's already voted to accept that lease and the terms of that lease.
Okay. Article 31 and 32 are both related. They're related to acceptance of a section of the general laws related to veterans, also commonly known as the Heroes Act, and it allows percentage exemptions under the law for if veterans meet the particular requirements of it. Any comments on that one?
Yep, so that was something passed in state law rather recently, and the town is just voting to adopt that section. Our Veterans Officer will be at Town Meeting to, I think, answer some, provide some specific details on how many veterans this could impact. So, we're asking Town Meeting to accept the law and then endorse the exemptions at the various levels as put forth in the motion.
Thank you. Article 33 relates to current eligibility limits for property tax deferrals under Massachusetts general law, and it relates to the income eligibility limits. This article is sponsored by the Select Board and Council on Aging. I don't know if we have any comments on that.
Yep, so kind of in a similar thread in both trying to take care of our veterans, there are certain specific chapters of, under Clause 41A, for senior tax relief that we want to adopt for our residents. So, we work with the Council on Aging to see if there are some of these provisions that we hadn't adopted, and in this point, we're trying to actually take as many as we can within senior circuit breaker and allowing that with other tax relief programs that we have in the town.
Thank you very much. Article 34 relates to the funding of geographic information system, GIS technology, and there's an amount of money requested, $150,000 for this purpose, to assist the School Department and Planning Department in the use and study of GIS technology and mapping. Does anyone want to speak to that one?
This, I believe, will be covered at the School Committee's hearing tomorrow evening, and I would leave it for them.
The School Committee is sponsoring this article, so it'll be covered as part of their discussion and hearing. Article 35 relates to the requesting, I'll read it, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate, transfer, or borrow a sum of money to pay the cost to acquire by purchase, donation, or otherwise the approximately 13.41 acre property located at Forest Circle, identified as parcel 1-202 and 1-273 on the assessor's map, to be used for municipal purpose and to take any other action incidental and related there, too." Would anybody care to comment on that one?
Mike, or I can start. There's, so on this specific motion, Town Meeting members were emailed this afternoon an update, revised motion to clarify that the use would be for conservation purposes, not municipal purposes, and we added a sentence that should this pass, that we would be pursuing a permanent conservation restriction on the land. There's the detail on the map. We debated this at Monday night's meeting, and we have support and effort already committed from the Conservation Commission to steward this property should it pass. And Mike, do you want to add any more to that?
That's a good summary.
Yeah.
Come on up. Grab the microphone. Why not?
Yeah, just to clarify here, the request is for a borrowing authorization. It's not for one and a half million cash transfer. So, and based on our projections, that's about $90,000 of debt service a year. It is contingent also on the WCCP authorizing the appropriation of the same amount. So, the total amount is $3 million that we're looking for, for the 13.41 acres, and that would be borrowing out of their revenue as well. So, that, and those funds are already being surcharged on residents no matter what. So, the 1.5 for the, from the CPA, the WCCP had already voted on and approved this by vote of seven to two, conditional on the Select Board moving forward. So, we're just, there was kind of a timing issue there, so we're just kind of flipping it and saying, hey, the Town Meeting puts forward a borrowing authorization for 1.5, and that'll be conditional on the WCCP who has supported it, you know, in the past. So, and this has been, you know, in the public for several months and now is on the warrant. So, happy to answer any questions.
Roger, if you have a question?
Yeah. Specifically, the change to conservation purposes is public use in recreation definitively part of the purpose here. Because I helped raise money for land that was purchased for conservation purposes, and then a bunch of people in that particular town said, well, we don't want anybody on the land.
Yeah, it is, and in fact, it is required in order for this to move forward for fund, for half, at least half of the funds to come from the WCCP, and those funds are conditioned on three categories: affordable housing, outdoor space and recreation, and historic preservation. So, it has to be available based on that funding, based on state law, for recreation and outdoor use. So, and that will be managed by the Conservation Commission, who also manages similar outdoor space and recreation resource areas in town. So, absolutely 100%, that is the intent.
So, there's going to be an entrance, a place people can park?
Yes, and it'll, it also connects to the Fells.
Yeah, I know where it is.
I know, you know. I'm just answering the question. So, there's, you know, there's access in Forest Circle, there's access through the Fells, and then there's another access off of Fallon Road. So, there's certainly beyond the individual butter parcels, there's multiple access points there. So, that's the, that's the idea. And I think you remember, Roger, you know, back in 2016 or so, that's when there was the large Forest Ridge proposal that came in front of us for almost 300 units.
And then there's also a piece that's part of the Vale development, right? Do we own that yet?
I can, that's a separate piece. As part of that development... The, as part of that development, there was a piece to be conveyed to the town. The developer, probably a couple of weeks ago, indicated that they're ready to do that conveyance, so on their side, they're developing the paperwork to make that happen.
Yeah, but there's a similar, and perhaps a policy issue there, are people going to be able to access that land?
Absolutely, yeah. Whether or not on that separate piece, there are particular access points that, you know, parking areas and things like, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't remember.
Don't know yet.
Don't know yet, but I mean, the, the intent is for this land not to be just fenced off and protected, but to be used, so bike trails, you know, walking trails, things like that. That's what we had discussed on the Vale project, and that's what we discussed on the.
And the Forest Ridge Conservation Commission's going to be able to speak to that?
Oh, yeah. Yep, they will. Yeah, and Tracy's here, too, she can answer questions.
Super. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Article 36 is kind of a moving target that often comes up toward the end of Town Meeting. It's used to balance the budget if needed. You won't need it, now I'm reassured of that.
And then repaid.
But I, so that will, but that's on there if it was needed. Article 37 is a vote to accept committee reports, dissolve old committees, authorize new committees. We'll see, there may not be anything on that one either. No motions have been received to date, so that may conclude there.
Is there going to be able to be motions from the floor, or how is it?
I would expect there will be motions from the floor, but that would come up in the course of the meeting. But to, to the point that no one has asked, put forward a motion to create a committee to study X, Y, or Z. That's, I think, what Steve is saying, but I suppose something could happen in the course of the meeting, like the Study Committee for Roberts Rules came out of spring Town Meeting and was formed at Town Meeting.
We still have this tri-community, I forget what it's called.
It used to be the Greenway.
The Greenway, I remember, it was a head of that for.
15 years.
It's looking kind of deleted, though.
No, I, I'm just saying, it's 2005.
Well, with that said, I want to thank you all for, for sticking around for this and being part of this discussion. That concludes the hearing on the warrant. I look forward to seeing you all at Town Meeting in the next three or four nights, however long it will be, but we'll see you all next week, starting on Monday. Thanks very much for attending. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, and Cam.